This conference will now be recorded.
You want me to start over? Okay.
Yep.
All the meeting to order, the Board of Adjustment. Uh, this is. October. Twenty. Six, two thousand twenty, time is five thirty-four. Purpose of the hearing tonight is to consider an application for variance that was filed by. Jonathan Edwards. And Meredith Kretschler. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, uh, Melissa Hartman is absent.
Could you call the roll?
Yep. Uh, Dennis Nelson.
We're being recorded, Al.
Yes, Michael.
President.
Patterson.
Your sound is off or has some sort of interference for reason.
Um, I know you're.
Dennis, you're. Down, too.
Yeah, I think we're, um.
Whenever you see it go from a microphone to a speaker, it means intermittent sound.
Oh.
Okay, see, like, yours just turned on. Either that or the mayor is manipulating things from the outside, so I don't.
Always.
Okay, I am unmuted. I am unmuted. Uh, and Peter Van Gula.
Right here, President.
Okay. Mayor David Smith and staff is Teresa Coleman.
Here.
All right, Teresa, your microphone is breaking in and out, but I assume you called the roll, and we'll just go ahead and see.
Yes, yes.
We can see all who's here.
Yours is doing the same.
We have an agenda. We will follow the agenda. Um, the first matter on the agenda is the call of the application. Not sure what that means. Can you tell me what that means, Teresa?
Sure, I'm just, and actually, Yanni just joined us again. Um, so perhaps, yeah, Yanni, do you want to tell us about your application?
Of course, yeah. Do you want me to just do the presentation or just bullet point?
Uh, just kind of introduce your application, then, um, I'll do a little summarizing of the variance process, and then you can do your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we are requesting a variance to the planning and zoning code in regards to our desire to construct an eight-foot-tall fence on the side of our property located at six-three-two Disney Road.
And, Yanni, is that to extend the height of the block wall that's already there or to, and to extend it?
It would be to extend, um, it would be to extend to a height of eight feet.
Okay.
The block wall that's currently existing and areas that are permissible to be six feet, but are currently not.
Okay, okay. So.
On the side, on the side.
Yeah, up to.
I'm having a real problem hearing, hearing, uh, I'm having a problem hearing people speak. Is anyone else having a problem?
Well, your, your sound is cutting in and out.
People picking in and out, yeah.
Yeah, when you see.
Mr. Evans, why do you need this fence? Why do you need a fence that's eight feet tall?
Yeah.
Again, uh.
That's part of his presentation.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, um, go ahead and kind of cover the things that I included in your packet, so. Adjust here, and, um, it is the Board of Adjustment that here, here, and decide variances. Um, a variance may be granted only if, because of special circumstances applicable to the property. Um, the strict application of the zoning code will deprive such property of the privileges enjoyed by other property in the same classification and the same zoning districts. And then, Yanni, you get to make your case.
I have to say that, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not hearing people speak. It's not coming through.
Well, you're cutting out as well, Dennis.
Can I say a few words here?
We can't hear you.
But I would like, I can't hear people. It's breaking in and out. I can't, I'm not getting a piece of conversation. If someone else is hearing this very clearly, another member, I would like them basically to take over the chair. And when, any volunteers?
Yeah, I haven't had any problems with my sound, if you'd like.
Okay, thanks.
So, what we should be doing right now, uh, having a summary by the city planning, are you gonna take the place of them, Teresa?
Yes, and essentially, that's what I just heard.
Teresa.
Yeah.
Everybody, just, just hold up one second, please. Then, would you log out and hit, come back in? Log out then back in.
Who? Dennis?
Dennis, can you hear me?
Dennis, can you log out?
I just hear you. I heard the din and then would you, and I didn't hear the rest of it. I'm sorry. Maybe I should try to drop out and rejoin.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll try to rejoin.
Okay. Did that help?
I don't know, we haven't seen him yet. Peter, are you hearing everything?
I'm hearing everything.
Good.
Okay. All right, so I did, um, summarize the variance process. Um, it was in your packet also, so now would be the time for Yanni to make his case, um, about his.
Dennis is not rejoined.
Property.
Dennis is not rejoined.
Okay.
Not.
But we don't have four members.
Do we need to wait for Dennis to call back just on the phone?
I.
He needs, he's gonna log back in, I thought. But if he's having trouble logging in, that may be the problem to begin with. It's a.
We're not on city property so we can drink, right?
No, actually, if you want that to be taken into, um, your presentation, if you want it to be put inebriated, normally is not quite as coherent as he was on alcohol, so, um.
I can, I can start and then reiterate the relevant points as those come.
I prefer not.
We can't even meet with three people.
Okay.
Well, you, you can meet, but you can't decide, Tom.
Yeah, well, I mean. Okay, here comes Dennis. He's arrived, it says. Dennis.
All right, I'm back.
Okay, another idea would be to go ahead and mute yourself while someone else is talking. Uh, maybe that will help with the background interference.
That doesn't seem to be working, Teresa. You're breaking up again.
Well, you are.
Maybe I should just call in?
Let me just call in, okay?
All right.
Good idea.
There he is. Your mic is looking steady right now, Dennis.
Okay, can you hear me? Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
All right.
All right.
Okay, let's try it one more time.
One more time.
Okay, one, one thing, Dennis, Dennis, uh, turn off your speakers on your computer. Otherwise, we're gonna get a double feedback.
Right, I'm working on it.
Okay.
Right, I'm working on it. All right.
All right. Mute your, mute your sound on your computer. Mute your speaker on your computer.
All right.
Uh, all right.
The micro says.
You see what, Teresa? It microphone.
Micro says. Does my microphone access or the device is on?
You're, you, you need, your audio is.
Telephone.
So you need to turn off.
Says for the device is on.
Your microphone.
Turn off the computer.
Yes.
Well, you're, you're connected by phone whether we see your face or not.
All right. Okay, so where do we go from here?
Computer. Okay. Because you're appearing twice. You're double dipping, all right?
Excuse me.
Okay.
Dennis, where it says to leave meeting, just do that.
All right.
You're staying, you're staying on the telephone, so that'll be good, sir.
Okay, I'm just on the phone right now, okay? I turned off the computer. Okay. So, could we hear from Mr. Evans again as to why he's applying for this variance?
Yes, yes, you can. Um, okay, so, uh, as I said, uh, this fence that we would like to build would be constructed on the north side of our property, aside, that faces the Copper Queen Hospital, and it would be constructed only where a six-foot-tall fence is already permitted. Can everyone hear me fine?
Yeah, is that the fence or the wall that we're talking about? Is it currently a fence or is it a wall?
Currently, there's a three-foot, um, chain-link fence on part of it and a six-foot-tall fence on a different part of it.
Okay.
I believe that the photos that, um, Nina took might illustrate that.
Yanni, are you proposing to build a, a block wall or a fence of some type?
I, um, I, it will be, um, cement block, but I'll, I'll get to that in a moment.
Okay.
So, a- as for Dennis's question, uh, we would like to build this fence, um, as it would alleviate both the visual and the sonic impact of living next door to the hospital with its frequent sirens and flashing lights. The taller fence would also add a degree of privacy to our house as we're in full view of the parking lot of the hospital, and our house is built on the raised foundation and has many windows on that side. Um, if I'm reading section six-point-four, uh, bullet point B, subpoint two correctly, um, it's, it seems that, um, the hospital being on the boundary of a residential zone should already have its own fence between six to eight feet tall. Um, so, our building this privacy fence, uh, we would be taking actions remedied for ourselves, so what has not been previously done. Uh, and if you, the board, grant us this fence, um, we will build it, as it's saying, out of cement block and then stucco it a soothing earth color so that it hopefully just fades into the background of the street and the tailings behind. Um, also, the greater mass of a cement block fence would further work to shield our house from the frequent sounds of the ambulance sirens and helicopters. Uh, that said, if, if for you having, um, a cement block wall versus a wood fence versus corrugated metal, if any of that is of issue to you, we'd be open to any, um, of your preferences, if that was an issue. And that's it.
Now, uh, are there other questions?
Well, are the other persons in favor?
Has anyone object, has, you know, we sent out notice to all the neighbors. Has anyone objected to this?
No, we received no responses, um, no comments from the folks who received the notice.
So we have nobody from the public in favor and nobody opposed, just the applicant, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
It's, uh, does the city have a position on this?
The city's only position would be, um, variance, uh, section of the ordinance itself, and I did, I include those notes in here. If any variance granted shall be subject to such conditions that will assure that the adjustment authorized shall not constitute or grant special privileges inconsistent with limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which the property is located. So, it's in your packet.
Well, will this be considered a grant of a special privilege?
Well, anything that's, anything that's, uh, change in, in the ordinance would be a privilege because it would be a rule that this homeowner doesn't need to abide by that others may. And we don't, I don't think we have a study of how many eight-foot walls there are in the community, but, um. This, we, the discussion of the variance by the committee, is that done openly? Mayor, it's just open comments by the committee? It's not like an executive session or anything?
Can I offer, uh, this is Peter, can I offer a, uh, comment?
Yes, sir.
One thing is, the hospital has changed a great deal. The house has been there for a long time, of course, a lot longer than the hospital has for the, in its current form. And, uh, my feeling is that the result of the noises and distractions and lights and the general tension around a hospital, as much as it's appreciated, uh, for helping other people, can impact negatively the people that live in the house directly across the street from it, so I would consider this as a special event and requiring, uh, special consideration. I, I personally am in favor of building an eight-foot wall, uh, and particularly if it's made out of concrete or something dense, so to mute the sound as well as the lights and everything else, and I think that each person deserves their privacy and peace of mind.
Well, uh, I have a question. What is the height of the windows on the house?
Probably eight to ten.
Okay, so basically, even the, even the top half of the front door, the whole, the windows on the front, the back, what looks like a sunroom, and the top half of the door are still gonna be open to any sound that would come from the hospital, correct?
Yes, not all of the house.
All we're really doing is providing, it may actually form an echo chamber, sound bouncing off. The only thing that, the only place I see that would benefit would be the, the window down below. It looks like a window from the basement. But, but like you said, the house is elevated, so all the windows are above eight feet from what I can tell. So I would think that if we're gonna, if we're gonna provide, um, a variance, then the variance should be for a good reason, and it should provide the relief that the homeowner is looking for, and I don't see where it's gonna provide any relief here because it's still gonna be below the windows of the house. And that, that would be my comment.
May I speak to that?
Well, my, my comment is, I'm concerned about the special privilege thing. If we went and, and granted this, and, and there's been no opposition, you know, so you would think it would be all right, but if we go ahead and grant this, then there's gonna be an eight-foot fence there, and then the next-door neighbor or the other neighbors are gonna wanna build an eight-foot fence, and the code says it should just be a six-foot fence. Now, we can, we can, uh, grant the eight foot when, if, if it doesn't create a, basically, a special privilege, and it seems to me we're gonna be creating a special privilege.
As, as I mentioned, there's mentioning in the code as for eight-foot-tall fences existing in commercial and residential properties. Um, and that has not yet been met by the Copper Queen Hospital. Um, so there's already in the code mention of this kind of situation and certain, certain guards put in place for situations like my own. I, I don't feel.
Have you made any type of, uh, have you written a letter to the hospital asking them to put a barrier up? And I mean, this, this is the state the house is in when you purchased it, correct?
What?
When you purchased the house, it was across the street from the hospital with a six-foot wall. So, you knew at the time you purchased it that it was across the street from the hospital and, and a wall of the height that it has present.
Of course.
And Dennis, to your comment, anytime, anytime an adjustment of the law is made, it does set a precedent. It sets a precedent that another person could refer to, but o- only if they have, um, it would be, it would be looked at separately, but it would be looked at with a lean towards the fact that we've done it once before, why wouldn't we do it again? Oh, that, how long's that house been there?
Nineteen oh eight.
Okay.
Oh, seven, sorry.
Fine, okay.
It's, it's, uh, it's, uh, Mayor Lefty Lazzawitz's old house.
Did he ever complain about the hospital sound?
He's probably complained about everything. I don't know.
Oh, I just, to me.
I, I do have, I do have one question, if I might, just, uh, I'm not a voting member, as you know, Yanni, but I do had, uh, one question. One of the reasons is the helicopters coming in, and I realize that, I live down the street from you. And they fly right over to my house in order to get there. But if you construct that wall as they're landing and taking off, have you thought about the possibility that in fact you're trapping that noise between the wall and the house, and that it's going to amplify it instead of negate it?
That was a comment I made, David. I think you created an echo chamber in there.
It is possible, but I'm, I'm not a sound engineer. And I don't, I don't know if anyone here is a sound engineer. Um, as, as for.
Well, we, we're here. We're here to defend the code.
Right.
We're here to, and we're here to hear citizens that they believe they have a reason to not adhere to the same code that everyone else. And what bothers me is that raising the height of the wall will not alleviate the problem because all the windows in the house will be above the wall.
We also seek to spend ample time in our backyard. We have many cats, and they're inside cats, so we're gonna be spending a lot of time with them in a fenced yard. So, the, the ability to have a sense of privacy, um, to me feels paramount here.
Well, that's not.
Ability to be outside, it's about the ability to not be hogged by anyone in any state that they're in parking in the hospital. Um, and as for, as for any sense of precedent that this could set, the only precedent that I see that this could set is the precedent of people potentially protecting themselves when they live next to a commercial property, and the commercial property has not abided by the. And built a, a fence.
That's a separate issue. If the property is supposed to have a wall, then you need to approach the syndic council and bring it to the, it's not, that's not part of what we're doing right now. And you're, there's a parking lot and a three-lane street between you and the actual hospital itself, the building. And I believe the helicopters land on the roof,
Yes, sir.
which is above your roofline. So I, I, I would say noise would be a better reason for this than you wanna play with your cats, because we abide by that wall ordinance, even though we have dogs and we have a nice, great yard, people walk by and, um, I, you know, when I first saw this application, I thought it was probably for privacy uh, because I didn't see any gain by the eight feet other than someone less than eight feet tall can look over.
Tom, just a point of clarification, the chopper has a pad. They do not land on the road.
They don't. Where do they land?
They land on that helio pad, which is behind, which is behind.
Behind the hospital? Okay, so the hos, we got the hospital, we got the parking lot and the street between this house and the helio pad.
No. You have this, basically, the street in, between this house and the helio pad.
There's no parking lot on the hospital there?
Well, not between the helio pad and the, uh, uh, street, no.
No, but between the hospital and the streets.
Well, between, sure, well, between the ER portion of the hospital and the street, uh, there's emergency parking only, meaning parking for only emergency vehicles.
All right. So, it's Mike Norman, if I could, um, ask some questions, Mr. Chair? Okay, um, so again, I, one of my questions was, what was the purpose of the wall? And I understand it's, as you said, Yanni, to, um, provide some sound barrier and, uh, also a visual barrier against, uh, activity at the hospital. Uh, I, I agree with some of the previous comments. I, I don't think, um, it'll really be effective in terms of mitigating the sound because of, um, as I said, the helicopters. I think anybody within half a mile of the hospital, um, hears the helicopters and the sirens. Um, and the visual barrier, I, I think, again, with the height of the windows, that provide, that's kind of limited, too. Um, the question I have, Teresa, is because if this is, um, approved, um, because it's a much higher, I don't wanna say much higher, because it's an eight-foot wall in a residential area, will a, a building permit be required? Because typically, a wall taller than, um, six feet has some additional footer requirements and engineering requirements, so, um, would that be, would there be a building permit and the, uh, associated inspections with that? the, uh, associated inspections with that?
You, if you were to approve this, you could make those, uh, requirements of your approval?
Okay, the other question I have is, um, to provide some privacy or visual screen, um, I noticed you have some vegetation along that wall? Is, would you consider, um, just planting, um, some type of a vegetative screen along there, um, that could grow higher than the six-foot wall? That could provide you some, um, a visual screen that way? I don't believe that there's any, um, restriction on having vegetation along there that would be greater than six feet, is that correct, Teresa? If they had a type of shrub or, um, box?
Right, correct, there would be no limitation on vegetation.
If not approved...
Okay. Okay, those are, those are my questions, um, um, I, um, yeah, I kind of, I, I, I'm not aware of any other eight-foot walls in the residential area. Uh, the other thing, um, in terms of commercial uses, uh, typically, when they go through the permitting process, at that point, they'd be required to comply with the code that's in place. So, um, I, I don't know what code was in place at the time the hospital was developed, but I, I, it could be that they weren't at that time required to put in a wall, um, especially on the street frontage. Um, but that's, so that's how the, the, my understanding of the code would be is, um, you can't, uh, after the fact, go back and require the commercial development to construct an eight-foot wall if that wasn't a requirement at the time, uh, they were permitted.
And that's, um, that did, uh, Yanni, did you bring any information to that? You know, when the hospital was built, code was implemented? Or you just grabbing a piece out of the code and applying it to the existing hospital as it is?
Sorry, Tom, was that a question for me or for Yanni?
For Yanni, I was wondering, Yanni, you, you just have the, uh, the piece of the code that talks about the wall, but you have no idea. You didn't talk to the people at the hospital about why they haven't put up a wall or... You're just pulling that out of the code without any other information, right? You haven't researched it at all?
I have a question.
Correct, sir, I, I am just a individual citizen, not a liaison with the hospital.
I have a question. How, how could you reasonably expect the hospital to put a wall in when everything about the hospital is emergency access? All those openings and all those entrances are required when people are, are, uh, in an emergency, uh, state? So, I don't see how the hospital could be required to put walls up when they require as much access as they, uh, for various types of vehicles, emergency vehicles that come in and out of that space.
Uh, be a wall with a lot of hosing.
A good, you know, the whole, whole idea here is, is a question of of comfort and, and, uh, quality of life. I think it's more of a quality of life issue than anything else at this point.
Well, and quality of life is, I, I don't know that the, that the code lots for quality of life. Well, we were doing quality of life variances. Every time somebody got peeked at nude sunbathing or somebody had their fruit picked off their trees or whatever, I mean, that is just not something that I, I know it's not coming in front of us, but, uh, when I first looked at this application, I had the feeling that it was for privacy of the backyard. Because it made no sense for the house, it didn't really help it. But I could see not wanting people to look over the fence, but I don't think that's a valid reason to change, uh, to allow variance to the code that the whole community has to abide by. And it was in effect when you purchased the house. You could have made, applying for variance and giving it...
That's, that's my application to you. It almost seems like you're seeking to remove... I, I feel like the responsibility of this body is, is to deliberate about these issues, but if the body is unable to make any sort of special circumstances, then why do you exist?
Well, we do, we, we, we got the ability to either grant or deny the variance. And if we deny it...
Understood, and if I needed to do a six...
Huh?
Understood, and if I, if I were to build a six-foot fence, I would have known needed, I would not needed to contact you and bother you and, and pay a sizable amount of money just to hear that it's not in the code?
No, it is in the code.
I know it's not in the code.
No, the code says...
And I've provided sound reasoning and I know, no one else lives next door to the Copper Queen Hospital. This is not a general issue.
I live a block from a firehouse and emergency medical care, and I have sirens going by me all the night.
And it affects all the people within the 300-foot radius. You know, the people on the other side of your house and behind your house, if they wanted to build an eight-foot fence, basically, and if we had granted you that permission, basically, it would be difficult to say no.
Well, I, I'm literally abutting, I'm literally abutting the hospital. They are my neighbor.
We're familiar with...
It's not just I'm in the vicinity, I am, they are literally...
We know they're, we do know they're across the street.
Yeah. Understood, seems like it's a special circumstance, not something that can be easily repeated. And even if someone attempted to, you would still have to grant them that variance. They can't just cume it on precedent.
It's true. That, if we, but if we, if we grant a variance, it does set precedence. And whether that is held up as a reason to grant a variance for someone else, that would be up to this body as well. So, I'm just, that's just one of the things that we're looking at that would be, uh, a factor in granting a variance like the one that you're requesting. One would be, does it, does it give the condition that you're hoping to achieve? And you stated originally that you wanted to, to block the sound. And it's not gonna do that. Then you secondarily wanted to be able to have a taller wall to play with your cats in the backyard. I, the sound, i- if, if it, if it actually would help, I would take, I would take a strong look at that, but this house has been, it's elevated well above an eight, an eight-foot wall.
Anything could help. It's, you know, obviously, I, I, I'm not able to construct a cement wall around the entirety of my house, topside, back. But anything is going to do something. Any sort of mass is going to reduce sound, especially for ambulances which are at a lower height. I understand helicopters, you know, that sound is coming everywhere and that's not something that can easily be...
No, you're just saying, just, just direct sound of traffic going down the street will be over the height of the wall. The wall is not going to reach the height to cover your windows.
How do we know that?
And I don't know, it's gonna reduce, it's gonna reduce by quite a bit. But did we, has anyone looked at any setback requirements? I mean, where is this wall gonna be? It looks like it's gonna be pretty close to the house. But I'm saying, you, originally, this, it still looks like this request is made to block the sound. And it's not gonna do that. So, that's just, that's just what I'm...
It seems to me, it seems to me, it seems to me we pretty well talked this up, but are we ready to hear a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we deny the application for a variance.
Sir?
I'll, I'll second that.
And, and privacy. Privacy is the main, is the main issue.
It, it is now, but it's, there's a motion on the floor. Has there been a second?
It's, it's seen...
I'll second?
Yeah, Mike Norman, I'll second.
That every day, that is our review.
So, who, who was the second, I'm sorry?
Dennis.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Dennis, we just said that you were the second.
That's correct.
Yes, thank you.
So, is there any, any further discussion on the motion? The motion is...
Yeah, I just, um, like...
Oh, yeah? Yes.
Okay, yeah, I just would make a recommendation, um, I, I think what would be effective for you is to construct a six-foot block wall, continue it, um, on the north edge of the property and then look at some vegetation to put in there. I think that would provide you with the, maybe the privacy that you're looking for, um, as opposed to the expense of an, an eight-foot wall, which, which probably wouldn't, um, um, give you the benefits that you're, you're looking for.
You could use, uh, Acateo. They sell Acateo panels at, at various sizes and put that behind the wall and that would effectively raise the wall from six foot to eight foot.
Other comments? Okay, so I understand the motion. The motion is to deny the, the application for a variance. Uh, Teresa, do we need a roll call on this?
Um, no, I just would need to know if there were, um, any nays.
Well, let me just say then, if there's no roll call, then all in favor of the motion should indicate so by, by saying aye.
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 No.
Okay, keep it a nay, thank you.
Okay, the vote is three to one, motion passes. Um, Mr. Evans, you have 30 days in which you can appeal, uh, this decision if you wish. If, that would be to the Superior Court. Is there, Teresa, there's no further business to conduct?
No.
Alright, then, without objection, I will adjourn, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, thank you, Mayor. Good seeing you, smiling face. Have a good day.